All right, my clock says seven o'clock. So at this point, I'll bring the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which this stands.
One nation. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And before we start our business meeting, I am going to ask you all to join with me in a moment of silence as we celebrate the life of Leona Melo, who was with the school department for a very long time. And in celebration of her life and it supported her family during their time of need, please join with me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is to hear from our student representatives this evening. And the agenda has listed Plymouth North as the first one to go. So Karen, you're on.
Hi, so again, the dream team is back and we decided to do another slideshow. Unfortunately, we don't have much, thank God, because it's been a little bit boring, but don't worry, much to go over.
So week seven of remote learning began today. And we're going to talk a little bit about AP testing, senior events and updates, teacher appreciation, the bus fee and more.
So AP exam started last week. I know I had art history and today I had biology. But students should remember to access their exam through the e-ticket sent to your email. They're sent out two days before. If you're having trouble submitting your exam, don't stress because College Board recently have a new option because they realized how difficult it was submitting all their exams worth. So they provided another option for afterwards. If you didn't submit all of it, there's an email that you can go. And students that experienced trouble submitting even till now can still request a makeup exam for June.
So for seniors, the administration is still working hard to figure out caps and gowns as well as working on event planning. Plymouth North seniors can check out the Twitter for senior spotlights.
And teacher appreciation week recap. The teacher appreciation parade was a huge success. Many students and their families drove out of the support and thanked the teachers throughout the district. The NHS Plymouth South High School also put together a video to recognize some of the hardworking teachers from the school.
So for the bus application and AP fees, in light of the school closure resulting to COVID-19, the school committee had decided that there would be a discounted bus fee application for the upcoming school year. In addition, AP discount deadline has now been extended until July 15. You must return at least one application per family, whether or not your student is riding the bus. And they can be found on this website.
And congratulations to Katana for Dennis, Jen Rowland, Joanna Tapa, Kailene Collins and Chris Morrow for winning best overall cinematography and eighth overall film in the nationwide short film competition.
And then we just have a little quote. So on the other side of a storm is the strength that comes from navigating it. Rise, raise your sail and begin. And that's it.
Okay. Your videos or presentations are not boring, so don't say that again. We are very interested. And that was for both schools, correct?
Yes.
Great. Okay, moving to the next agenda item, which is, oh, this is really exciting, the audit.
Dr. Sorensen, tonight we have information relative to our audit. And Mr. Costin works diligently with his staff to actually support information for this audit. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Costin as we can provide some background information and information regarding how we did.
Great, thank you. Mr. Costin.
Thank you, Dr. Sorensen. So every year, we're required to have an audit of the end of the year report. This is statewide and it is to ensure that funds that you're reporting are correct and they are reported in the proper classification. As we all know, the DSC uses these end of the year reports for calculating state aid, but they also use it for net school spending and the per pupil cost, which are very important. This year, there were two findings on our audit report. Most, both of them were really figures that were placed in the incorrect columns or rows. So the first finding had to do with MSBA reimbursements. Instead of being placed into the pay as you go column, it should have been paid into the contract, the old way of funding. We still have some projects out there that are being funded over a number of years. So that was finding number one. And number two really was to do with specialized transportation. The students and the funds are reversed in one column for out of district students. So what essentially it meant is that we had a large number of students with a small amount of money who are out of district. And the funds were the in district funds and it should have been the reverse. And those were both corrected with amendments to the DSC over a month, month or two ago. So in general, I think we did very well with our audit.
Yeah, I want to say certainly, Mr. Costin, into your office and to the school department, that's great accolades. The entire audit found two clerical errors, moving from column A to column B and moved the numbers around. So that's really a testimony to the way we manage our finances. Thank you very much. Okay, we have an update on the superintendent's search process. And we'll go to Ms. Fatt.
Yes, we have our two finalists and we're in the process of checking references. And I'll be communicating that with the school committee. And then we'll be making a decision on the next steps about announcements or further steps after we're able to confer further.
Thank you. Any questions from school committee about you? I'm sorry, I went too quickly, either about the audit or about the search. Okay. Superintendent's report, Dr. Mestes.
Yes, Dr. Sorensen, I have a few things to report tonight. Here it is, another Monday. I have information relative to some of the most important things that we're working on right now. I'm going to talk about the first one regarding graduation. I know the girls had presented on this a little bit. I did release a video last week relative to graduation and how graduation would be handled and how that. So I know that got a lot of play around the community. There was some dissatisfaction by some of our stakeholders regarding us having the type of graduation that I've described. And one thing that I want our graduates and our parents to know and family members to know that, you know, under the circumstances that we're in today, under the orders that we have in the Commonwealth, we were looking at, really looking at how we could honor our students on June the 6th, because that was the initial graduation date. One of the biggest concerns that I have is we have students that are leaving Plymouth. We have our students that are off the military. They leave, typically they leave middle to the end of June. And if we move graduation to a better time, August, September, we would be missing those students as well as other students that have other educational commitments that are not in the area. So, you know, it's a tough situation for everybody. And I try to convey that in my message to everyone. I know there is a petition going around to try to change the way we're having graduation. At this point, I don't know of another option other than deferring it to an unknown date. I think the problem that you have with deferring it is every day we go past the end of June or middle of June, we're going to start losing more and more students. And that's the last thing that I want for our students here in Plymouth is to not be able to be with them. With that said, I just want to clarify a couple of points for the school committee that they may have some questions regarding how graduation will take place. Students will be arriving in cars and those cars can be populated with family. Okay, so that was one of the questions that people had is are they going to drop students off and kids walk to a location and get their diploma and walk back? Our parents or whoever is designated to be in that vehicle will actually be probably 10 to 15 feet away from the stage and will be, have a front row seat to watch their children receive their diploma. They'll be in their cars. And, you know, we're planning a pretty spectacular entry to that and also how they would receive their diploma. Tomorrow, we'll be releasing a video of the location of where graduation will be. So we're going to send that out to everybody and they'll actually find out where this will take place. I think it's very fitting, it being that this is the 400th anniversary of Plymouth and also the 2020 class. So, you know, I know the school committee members, you were also mentioned in this petition to try to curtail the activities on graduation. And I'm not sure what your thoughts are. Maybe there'll be some discussion here tonight regarding that. But, you know, I do believe things are in motion for June 6th. We have caps and gowns that have been ordered. We have diplomas that are starting to arrive. We have other measures that we've taken. You know, masks that are actually logoed by school, those are going to be available. So I think there are a number of pieces that we have in place that we're preparing. So there's a lot of orchestration into trying to get graduation to work smoothly on normal circumstances. This is a little bit unusual and we're working with all the parameters that we have. I know the governor did announce today that we're going to have some relaxing of the rules that we have. But those are really small space setting pieces and they're relative to business, getting people back to work in certain sectors. So we're anticipating and, Dr. Sorensen, if you want, I can stop there and then continue with the other three items that I have.
Yes, I think we'll open this up for discussion at this point. Student representatives and committee members. Michelle.
Well, I mean, I don't think, I mean, I don't particularly have anything more to add to the conversation. I think that what Dr. Mestes said is exactly, I think, all of our thoughts and our concerns because, you know, you're going to leave somebody out if you push it back. And so I think this is the best situation we can do at this time. I mean, to me, it just makes the most sense. And I thank you for all the work that you put into it. But I do completely understand why you would want to have an in-person graduation. But even if we push it to September, there's nothing to be said, even for the kids who are around, that will be even able to have. Or, I mean, that's like basically, I mean, 2021 is the next option. You know, you can walk across the stage too. But, I mean, I think it's really hard in these times for any of us to know the future. So thank you for what you're doing.
Ms. Hunt.
And, you know, I know Michelle said, I know you wanted an in-person graduation. This isn't in-person graduation. This isn't a virtual graduation, which most schools are doing. This isn't something on Zoom where they get a virtual diploma. This is an in-person graduation. And I think that the families are going to get up as close as possible in this situation. I know that MASC put up, you know, with articles about other towns that had petitions or whatever. And those schools weren't even getting what we're getting. I mean, we're going so much further for them. And I just, you know, my biggest complaint is I just wish that, you know, people realized how much work was put into it, that you did talk to students, that you did talk to the community, that you talked to CDC about what to do. And, you know, I just, you know, wish somebody was here to present it to us in person. The way it was, it was, you know, I know that not everybody realizes how to do it, but I think it's kind of, it negates it. It makes it kind of divisive when it's approached this way. And I just wish that, I mean, I know that you only announced it on Friday and this all, you know, blew up on Saturday. And I know, I'm sure that these people didn't call you directly. Nobody called me, not one single person. So I just, that's where I get frustrated. And I feel, I know that no one's going about this to make everybody upset. We're doing this to make them happy. And we're doing this in the best way that we all know how, to give them the most amazing experience. How many kids are going to be able to say in the future they had a graduation like this, right? I mean, it is kind of unique, but I understand where everybody's coming from. But this is an in-person graduation and a lot of towns aren't even doing it.
Mr. Morgan.
Actually, Michelle stole my thunder because I was going to say, you know, we're one of the slowest states to come around and start reopening things. So there's no guarantee in September that you're going to be able to do anything different. And also Gary Segary's point is you're going to probably lose out 25, 30% of the kids if you have it the first week of September because going off to college, going to the military, things like that. So, yeah, I mean, we all would like a traditional graduation, but I think this is the best scenario that we can have. And like Kim said, this would be very unique and you can turn a negative into a positive, so.
I think that, two things I want to say about this. One is that it is perfectly okay for somebody to circulate a petition about any topic that they feel, that they feel energy about and their heart is in. So that's perfectly okay. And none of us like what we have to do for this graduation. Every school district all over the country is struggling with the exact same problem, trying to figure out how to have graduation. And, you know, we talk about, Ms. Hunt, you mentioned, everybody talks about face to face. But what it really comes down to, what the graduates and families want to do is they want, they want to have a lot of hugging. They want to have a lot of touching. It's a very emotional day where you hug your classmates and your teachers and you, and you know what, and we cannot allow that to happen.
Right.
Because we're in a pandemic. And as much as we'd like that to happen and our heart goes out to them, we can't, we can't be a party to communicating this virus. And that's why we're stuck with what we're stuck with.
You're right.
Ms. Haywood.
I just want to say, it's just, it's unfortunate. And as Bob mentioned, yes, we were the, one of the slower states, but it's because that, you know, we had some high numbers. We were third in the country. And so it is difficult. And all of this is a loss. It's a loss of a lot of items. It's a loss for everyone. But I think we are doing the best as a school district to honor our graduates in this circumstance. And I guess as a community, we just have to kind of look forward and realize that there are different ways, unfortunately, to do things. That we have to kind of rise above this, you know, unfortunate, unfortunate time in our history. So I agree with everyone.
Yeah.
Ms. Burgess.
Yes, it's kind of a ditto, but yes, I think that we really should be grateful that so much time and energy has been put into having this graduation so that they could get their diploma live, you know. And I feel that everybody's done the best they can under really unfortunate circumstances. And so I think that we just move forward with what we have planned. It would be too difficult anyway to change it all if we could. So I would say move forward, yes.
All right. Anybody else who hasn't spoken would like this. Alex.
I just want to say that I think based off like the circumstances that we're having to deal with, I think it's the best case scenario to have it with the drive-by because it's a lot better than having it over Zoom and not like actually getting to be that person. I think it gives like the seniors more closure to actually be there and to still have some sort of graduation experience, even though it's not exactly what they hoped for, so.
And it's a drive-in, not a drive-by.
So, Dr. Sorensen, if I may, I have three more things to cover. But just to close this out on this discussion, I want everyone to know that the stage that will be set up will be the exact same type of stage with the same people on the stage that they would get on the football field. So they will see the same cast of, you know, school committee chair, superintendent of schools, building principal. Those are the only three people other than the graduate that have ever been on the stage, other than the Val and Sal giving speeches, those type of things. So there will be, you know, the administration that will be off the stage typically and they will be reading the names. So that will be the same structure. We have a sound system that will be there in place. All of that will be streamed live. So I think people will be able to see that and it will be streamed across the world. I mean, people can see this everywhere. So that will be somewhat exciting. Like I said, tomorrow we'll be announcing that the specific location and kind of give a preview of that, a very short video that will be going up. And I just want everyone to know that there will be another set of correspondence documents and perhaps video that will clearly delineate the responsibilities of the school district and how we're going to do this, but also what obligations the seniors and their families have to be part of it. So all that will be packaged and it will go together. And that will be something that everyone can look forward to. And just last thing on this and then I'll move on. Just so that everyone knows, I had a very good conversation this morning with the petitioner, a young lady, senior from Plymouth North High School. And we had a very good conversation. I understand the perspective of the students because I understand that a lot of them have a feeling of, they would love to be together as a class and sit together and enjoy that opportunity. But you know what, a very respectful conversation. And I want to thank her so much for reaching out to me today. We did have probably a 10-minute conversation, which was, like I said, very good. Dr. Sorensen, if.
You can move on.
Okay. So one thing that I want to mention that we did get notification late last week that we're going to be able to provide food in the fashion that we're offering it all through the summer. So the program that we have in place now and the delivery means that we are distributing food throughout the community of Plymouth that will take place throughout the summer. And we did get approvals for that. Mr. Van Cotten and a team of people and volunteers, staff have been really diligent in providing that information. We did have a staff meeting last Friday. We had close to 800 people on the Zoom call, which we have that staff meeting every Friday. And I did talk about another number of things. One item that I brought up for the second week in a row is our discussion regarding budget and the deliberations that we are having now and for the foreseeable future on how the budget will be impacted by this pandemic and also the loss of revenue that the town is anticipating as well as what the state is anticipating for cuts in local aid. So we will be sharing information with our staff as time goes on. Typically, at this time of the year, my team, we go to every single school and we do a budget meeting and we talk to them about the budget, what we're going through, what challenges we have. So I've been trying to do that through these staff meetings. But it's difficult, difficult work. It's difficult because everyone is worried about how it'll impact them, their families and so on. But we're trying to make it as tangible and as understandable. And we'll continue to do that. And I know school committee has their work cut out for them on that part. The next piece I have, and I will turn it over to Dr. Campbell in just a second, is relative to reentry. And I know that there's a great deal of discussion on our end and as well as parents about how do we reopen our schools? And there's a great deal of discussion, a great deal of concern. There's information that we don't have quite yet from the CDC, the Mass Department of Public Health and also Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So what we're doing is we're putting all this information there. We do have some guidance from the Department of Ed, but it's just basic structural work that we are going to be doing. And under the direction of Dr. Campbell, he took it upon himself about two, two and a half weeks ago to suggest that we start putting this group together to start planning different aspects on how we re-enter the schoolhouse. So with that said, for you, Dr. Sorensen, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Campbell to describe a little bit of that process. And then that will complete the report for this evening.
Please, thank you. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Sorensen. So as Dr. Mestes just stated, we've just initiated the process to begin discussions regarding reentry in the fall through the formation of a reentry advisory committee. So, you know, our families and communities need to know that our schools will be ready to open as soon as the state and public health officials signal that it's safe. So, and I think that these last few months have really helped us to recognize the entire community, how vital our schools are, not only to the educational piece, but to a lot of other social and emotional supports as well. We need to do everything in our power to make sure that we open our schools in a manner that's safe and responsive to our families and our staff, our community. This is going to involve, as I've said, both at our safety meeting last week and to our administrators and to our, during our call with our staff on Friday, this is going to involve novel challenges that we need to start planning immediately for, even though we don't have specific guidance, as Dr. Mestes said, yet from the state and Department of Education. So I do know that Secretary Pfizer told lawmakers on the education committee last week that Commissioner Riley has recently put together a working group to develop a reentry plan, guidance for school districts that will be dependent on continued improvement and stabilization in the overall public health data that we receive. The secretary also said that a return to classroom, and this is a quote, would require stringent protocols to ensure social distancing, personal hygiene, effective cleaning, along with measures to assess students' and staff health, testing protocols, systems for contact tracing, isolation and quarantine. So he went on to say that there's no question that remote learning will be much larger factor in planning for the next school year as well. And we realized that. We realized that we need to, if there's a resurgence, for example, of COVID-19 symptoms. So even if we're able to start in a quasi-normal fashion, we have to be prepared for the possibility that education may be interrupted again. So that's why I said to Dr. Mestes a few weeks ago, it's really critical, even though we don't have guidance yet, to start thinking about the possibilities. So when we get that guidance, we're best prepared. So we just started brainstorming a roadmap that will serve as our framework for this planning process. And it considers best practices from the CDC regarding prevention, mitigation, response, recovery measures. And we understand that, you know, we're going to rely on more specific direction from the state, which will be forthcoming, but we need to start that planning now so that we can eventually start sharing this information with, you know, our ideas with staff and with families and eventually put in place measures that are going to alleviate and address any potential concerns as we develop our plan moving forward for the fall. So as I said, we recently initiated a reentry advisory committee. This committee will be charged with making considerations for our return to school. So there's a number of recovery areas that we need to consider, such as our general governance of school operations, our physical and emotional health of students and staff, so not just the physical health, but the. but the emotional piece as well, our academic programming and instruction, obviously, both what's taken place since the closure, but also when we return. We're going to need to do a complete and thorough assessment of our physical instructional environments to determine what measures we may need to take before opening in the fall, depending on what that guidance is. Another thing, with extracurricular activities and sports being such a large part of our school community, we know how important that is. We need to prepare for the response and the guidance that we get from the governor and local health officials. We may need to review policies and reconsider some of our attendance policies, school visitor policies. These are things that, without guidance, we know that these are factors that we will need to consider moving forward, regardless of what that plan may be. Transportation is a significant resource, as we all know, to this community, for our students and families. We may need to reconsider how our buses currently operate. Again, we need more guidance on that, but these are things that we may need to consider. Technology considerations will need to be thought of thoroughly as we plan for any potential phase reentry, and also any short-term closures that may result as a result of any reemergence, reemergence of COVID-19, as I said a few minutes ago. So, much like the governor's plan to reopen the economy, which was just announced in more detail this morning at 11:00, we may be compelled to consider a progression of reentry ourselves through distinct phases. So, we need to prepare ourselves for that. So, but regardless of those phases, we understand that we have to consider, as I said already, plans for mitigation factors that may arise. So, at all phases of our planning, we need to know, monitor for the reemergence of those symptoms. So, this planning is going to take some time. It's going to be very significant and time-consuming. And throughout this process, it's really important that we gain diverse perspectives on everything that I've mentioned already. So, our advisory committee is going to be significant in size. I sent an email out a little over a week ago to our staff and had overwhelming response to that. So, I was very appreciative and expressed that to our staff, and we'll be communicating to them in the near future. We want to make sure that we have representation from every school on this committee, and it's critical that our unions are involved throughout this planning process as well as we consider the working conditions for employees. And also, our parents and family involvement is going to be essential, particularly as we get more information, as well as all of you in the school committee. It's really important that your involvement and support and endorsement of many pieces. So, as I said, and as Dr. Myssus said, we don't have specific guidance yet, but it's important that we start brainstorming every possible scenario and take into consideration everything we can so that when that guidance does follow, because it is, you know, mid to late May, and time will get by, we need to be best prepared to put our plans in place, communicate them to the community, and make sure that we feel that we're reopening our schools in a safe manner. So, our advisory committee, to kind of sum it up, will consist of five distinct frameworks or components. So, we'll be looking at first the wellness group, which will be looking at the physical and social, emotional wellness of our staff and students, and how we monitor that and support that. Instructional piece, which I've already mentioned, will be looking at our facilities, school, general school operations, busing, food services, extracurricular activities, sports, et cetera. And then the technology, which I mentioned already. So, in the coming days and weeks, we'll be communicating regularly to the entire school community, this board, of course, and your input, as I said, and approval of several components as we go along is going to be really important. So, that's a general summary, Dr. Sorenson, of what we've initiated so far, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have, if I can.
All right. Committee members with questions, observations, comments? Ms. Badger.
I just wanted to say I was in on the initial discussion with the safety committee last week, I think it was. And it just very, when you go through all the pieces, and obviously what Chris is saying, there's so many parts to it, but it just is really impressive and all the thoughtful discussion that was had in that short one hour. And, you know, it's headed by a great group of people, and so just thank you in advance for the hours of work that that is going to take, especially with currently the lack of guidance, but hopefully there is more guidance coming fairly soon.
Yeah. Dr. Campbell, you mentioned a lot of things, and I did receive a couple of questions about, and you didn't mention it, so I want you to mention it, about whether or not the school year is going to start as scheduled.
That's a good question. I think that would really be contingent upon the guidance that we receive also.
Well, I think inherent in the question, the person asked me whether or not we would start sooner than, like the middle of August or something like that.
Oh, that would be a major negotiation piece.
I want to make sure that you said that, that it's not in the plans right now.
No, I think anything in our plans, honestly, when we look at all the things that I just mentioned, undoubtedly, it requires us to look at our current working conditions for all of us. So, everything that we put in that plan is really going to require a lot of collaboration and work with not only our teaching staff, families in this board, but with our associations as well.
And the other thing I want to mention, you mentioned it, you touched upon it, the social, emotional health of the students as well as the teachers. And I had a teacher, not in this district, recently say to me, "The best part of teaching I don't get to do." And that is meeting with my students, getting to know my students, talking to them every single day. Now, all I do is read grade papers and give out assignments. And she was saying to me, "I hope I don't have to do this for a whole year." So, I'm concerned about the social, emotional health of our educators.
Absolutely, Dr. Sorenson. I think that's one of our biggest concerns. I've been concerned about that since we closed on March 13th. Excuse me. And I think, you know, during one of our calls today, I think it was Mrs. Raines who mentioned, you know, this whole idea of, you know, we're referring to it as social distancing. And it may seem slight, but, you know, the words, they're encouraging us not to use the word "social distancing" or the phrase "social distancing" now and refer to it as "physical distancing", because in reality, social distancing is probably the worst thing we could do, particularly now during this closure, because, as you said, that human connection is critical. And even right now, I would argue, it's more important, even in this remote world that we're living in, that we try to find opportunities to connect socially with our students, not just for academic purposes, but for that, just that human connection, and for our staff included, having opportunities for them to connect and to commiserate and to, you know, so we're trying to push out, and you get those emails as well, but I'm trying to find every opportunity we can to not only connect for our students' social, emotional well-being, but our staff included, and some of our mental health providers too, to support them and supporting each other through this process, because the social piece is probably one of my biggest concerns, because the academic piece, I feel strongly, we can recover from that. I worry about the disconnection and, you know, if we can remedy that as much as possible or remediate that as much as possible, I think we'll be better off.
Okay. All the committee members on this topic. Ms. Hayward. You're muted.
Even, I guess, parents in terms of like their social, emotional needs, kind of trying to balance, you know, family and work and this new role of being an educator, you know, somewhat, you know, this educator to their kids. But I wanted to bring up a question, I guess, just in terms of the remote learning. If this ends up being a continuation in the fall, are we going to look into like further development of the remote learning? Or will it look like it does now?
No, I have no doubt that the guidance that we would receive from the Department of Education would, we would need to have something that's more significant in nature, I would imagine, both in connectedness, but also in just in terms of the academics. You know, it would be something more evolved than we're currently experiencing, Ms. Hayward.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. Those are the things that we will start, you know, developing and planning and thinking through various scenarios. Obviously, that can be contingent upon the structure that they provide us, you know, if there's a change in, you know, our school schedule, for example, dictated by the state, that would shift or that would dictate how we do that. But regardless, I think the remote piece, as I said, what Secretary Pfizer said, it needs to be, I think, in terms of significance, I think it would need to be more significant in nature in how we support our students. Yeah.
Any other questions for Dr. Campbell or Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on what Venna said. I think our educators are doing an excellent job. We put this together really quick and to put this online learning together, and we were a little bit ahead of the curve when we did it. But it's not the same as classroom instruction. I mean, they're getting assignments, they're doing work, they're turning in, but they're not really being taught, and they're not interacting with other students or their educators. So, you know, we'll have to play within the framework that the, you know, the Department of Education and the state government has, but if we can at least do a blended education or maybe take the next step in online education, I think will help a lot of the students, especially the, you know, the middle school and high school students. They really need that interaction with the teachers, whether it's online classes versus just assignments, whatever it is. And they're doing a great job, I think, like Venna said, or as you said, Dr. Campbell, online 2.0, if we have to do that a little bit in the fall.
Yeah. If I may, Dr. Sorenson, to kind of piggyback on that, I think, you know, one thing that we recognize, regardless of the level, but particularly even for the elementary, is the amount of support that our current model, you know, the amount of support that's necessary from our families in order to support the students. And regardless of how much time we spend in remote learning, if we do at all next year, depending on the situation, if there's an additional closure or whatever the guidance is from the state, we need to be very mindful of that balance, but also the impact that it has not only on the students and the teachers, but on the parents that are supporting us and supporting the educational process back at home, because it's a lot of work, regardless of the tremendous energy and lessons and opportunities that our staff provide. We recognize and appreciate the enormous impact that this entire experience is having on our families.
One more point, Dr. Campbell. We're all a little concerned about the student who isn't responding well to this remote learning. Perhaps they don't have enough internet in their house, or perhaps they don't have the guidance from, maybe the parents are both working, whatever the case may be. So, my question for you is, how do we know if we're losing a student? And if we do discover we're losing a student, what are we doing?
That's a great, very good question, Dr. Sorenson. So, from the very beginning, in terms of our protocols in place, we've asked every building to have a structure in place, starting with the classroom teachers, but going through guidance by school adjustment counselors, administration, and as well as our school attendance officer at times to do wellness checks if necessary, but to have, and our SROs, but to have structures in place so that we're progress monitoring our students, not only for the academic involvement, but for the social, emotional well-being of our students as well. So, we have, at the building level, we have structures in place where our staff and our administrations and support teams have been monitoring those students, reaching out to them, making phone calls, physically showing up if need be, doing everything at our power to make sure that our students not only are thriving as much as they can in this environment academically, but emotionally as well, doing everything we can. So, we do have those structures in place. We also, I sent a survey out a couple of weeks ago to our families if they were looking for any additional feedback. From the 1,200 people that filled out this survey, we had 45 families across the district that were looking for some extra support. And it wasn't significant in terms of what they were looking for, but they were looking for some extra support. I made a few calls myself and then also created a sheet, which we shared with our administration, and they acted on that properly and swiftly at the building level. And we have an actual documentation of that, because I asked them to give me that feedback. So, we continue to monitor that. We'll continue to put things in place. And if necessary, moving forward, next year, we would continue to do that. And we're going to need to, we're going to need to evaluate the well-being of all of our kids coming in, both academically, but, you know, emotionally as well.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Badger.
I just wanted to say that I'm really glad to hear that we are following through with those steps of, because I have, my goddaughter is in another South Shore community, and I don't think they're following those procedures, and she won't read for anybody but me. And so, every day, we read for like an hour, but it's good that she has that, but I don't think that anybody in her district is reaching out to figure out what the heck's wrong and why she wasn't reading for three weeks, you know?
Thank you. I would encourage anyone that they're watching and they feel that they know someone who's having a hard time, that perhaps doesn't feel that they're being connected or is struggling with anything, please reach out to your building principal, reach out to me directly. We want our kids, and families as well, if they're struggling, you know? We're not only here for our kids, we're also here for parents. I've had some, you know, great conversations with families. A dad who, you know, he and his wife were both, you know, medical professionals, and the grandfather is helping, you know, who's in his 80s, is helping to help out the kids. So, you know, we had to put a plan in place for that family. These are, you know, we have a lot, you know, over 5,000 families, unique families in the Plymouth Public Schools. So, there's a lot of those circumstances. We need to do everything we can to support our families. And so, I encourage the public, if there's anyone that they know of, just to reach out.
Okay. I'm glad you made that offer, Dr. Campbell. Okay. We're going to move along now. We have one letter, Mr. Morgan. You need to unmute. You need to unmute.
Yeah. All right. Yes, we have one correspondence this evening. It's a thank you letter from Alison Riordan to Jerry Williams at the Plymouth Garden Club for their continued support of Plymouth Public Schools, and specifically their support of the third grade program every year, but also expressing her regret that the only some of the third graders were able to benefit from the program this year due to this closing.
Okay. Reports and proposals from committee members. Are there any? All right. I'm moving on to the next agenda item. PYDC is their report.
Not, I gave it last week.
Okay, thank you. Is there a building committee report?
They won't meet until the 21st.
Thank you. Committee members, does anybody want to bring up anything from the old business pile? Alex.
I just had a quick question. A few of my teachers and other people have been asking about the bus fees, and they were wondering if there was any way, like, if they don't have a printer at their house and they don't want to go like to the store, or the store's not open for them to print something, could they like apply for like something to be sent to their house so that they...
All right. Great. Great question. Let's find out what the answer is. Dr. Myssus, Mr. Costin.
I think Mr. Costin probably can answer that a little bit better than I can as far as the bus fees.
Mr. Costin.
So, we've had a few questions about that. We're fine if they can, I understand they cannot probably possibly scan it or print it. If they need to, we could mail them out a copy, if they would like, or scan them a copy. Obviously, they can't print it, so we'd be happy to mail out a copy.
Okay. Thank you.
Just email me, and I will send them out a copy.
Okay.
Thank you. Excellent, Alex. Thank you. Anything else on the old business? How about new business? Nothing. Accounts payable, Ms. Hunt.
Okay, let me just get back to that screen. Building committee just came up. Hold on. There we go.
I'm a couple of clicks behind you. I just moved us up.
Okay. I moved the Plymouth School Committee, except and approve the report and accounts payable warrant, number S051420 dated May 14th, 2023, in the amount of $1,314,714.81, as presented.
Is there? Is there a second? Ms. Burgess is the second. Is there any question on that motion? Okay, I'm going to take the vote as the names appear on my screen. Ms. Hayward. I assume that's a yes, you've been muted. Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
And that's unanimous. Ms. Hunt, back to you.
I'm just making it quick to move. Is it being done manually? Okay. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the grants and revolving funds warrant, number G051420, in the amount of $20,143.56 as presented.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Selly is the second. Any question on the grants motion? Okay, in the same order. Ms. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much. We have the minutes of April the 6th. What's the pleasure of the committee?
I'll move them.
Thank you. Seconded by, Ms. Badger is the second. Are there any questions on the minutes of April the 6th? I'm not seeing any hands. We will then take the motion, I mean, we'll take the vote. Ms. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And now we have the minutes of April the 9th. Ms. Burgess?
Yes, I move it.
Okay, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Morgan is the second. Any questions on the minutes of April the 9th? Okay, Ms. Hayward, your vote. Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that's unanimous. So the minutes are done. Ms. Grimes, during this meeting, has anybody emailed you or contacted you before this meeting about comments from the general public?
No.
Move off. And the remainder of our meeting this evening is going to be an executive session if I get a motion for it. I would like a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters relative to union and non-union personnel. Do I have that motion? Ms. Burgess moves it. Is there a second? Ms. Badger is the second. Any questions? Okay, your vote to go into executive session, Ms. Hayward? Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The school committee will be going into executive session for the purposes stated. At the end of executive session, we will be coming back out in the open session, and the only business that will take place is to adjourn the meeting.